County Commissioner May is moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight. And I would like to ask Director Springfield and County Attorney Smallwood to come up so that they can provide support and testimony to this agenda item. Fellow commissioners, two weeks ago, I provided you with a oil and gas draft ordinance that was brought forth on the P&amp;Z Commission by Planning and Zoning Commissioner Dan Stoddard. As you know, Tuesday night, the P&amp;Z Commission took that ordinance under consideration. I won't go into all the details of what was a three and a half hour meeting, other than to give you the highlights, and the highlights are this: That board recommended that the P&amp;Z staff, under the direction of Director Springfield, effectively tweak, if you will, that document, and produce a document that reflected the wishes of the P&amp;Z Commission in terms of what they thought needed to be in that document, and what was lacking. There was a meeting today where Planning and Zoning staff, under the direction of Director Springfield, did just that. And what you have in your packet tonight is the original document that I gave you two weeks ago, and the document that was produced today. Let me see if I can just kind of walk through what the big differences are between these First of all, they represent the tweaking that was suggested by the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday night. There is 398 words and differences between the two documents. The biggest differences are this, and I'll let Director Springfield and Counselor Smallwood answer any questions that you might have, but the biggest differences are the format that the document is in, which it has to be in a legislative format, so that it can be passed as an ordinance by this commission. The preamble, for lack of a better description, is the first paragraph that's in all caps at the top of the document. Paragraph 1.3, and I'll let Director Springfield talk to that, but it's basically a statement that needs to be in the document that says that San Manuel County has the authority to do this. Section 1.4 is basically all of the pre-emptions. In other words, state and federal laws that the county cannot exceed. I don't know if that's the right way to describe it, but maybe you could add to that, Director Springfield?
I'll actually defer to Counselor Smallwood.
Okay, Counselor Smallwood.
Most of these are ones we cannot exceed. The case up in Mora County, which has been referred to in workshops, the federal judge in that case was pretty clear that the state has preempted the county, not completely in oil and gas, but they have preempted it by quite a bit. And there are only certain things that the county still has ability to do, and that's the list of these are the laws that regulate oil and gas within either the federal government or the state government.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Counselor? Okay, then we'll move on. I know that we're going to walk through this document, so that we can cover the 398-word difference, because I want all the commissioners to be comfortable with what's in the document, since the P&amp;Z staff tweaked it today. So when you go to Article Three, on Page Two, yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, sorry, Commissioner Howes.
So what is your process here? Do you want to go through these items, or are there comments that you're looking for in each item? Or are we -- because apparently, we're working toward kind of feeding back to Planning and Zoning, so they can take this back to Planning and Zoning Board?
Actually, we'll talk about that when we get through the document, the next steps in this process.
Well, the reason I ask that is I would have some comments as regards 1.4.
Sure.
Which lists all those federal and state pre-emptions.
Okay, if you want.
But I think it would be helpful to have an addendum to this package that would summarize what those items were, so that people reading the ordinance would understand more than just the title.
So let me make sure I understand where you're going with this. You would like to see the actual language of the statute?
Oh, I don't want to see the whole statute, but there might be, like, let's take the first one here, the Surface Owners Protection Act. In a small paragraph, it would be explaining to the reader of this what that means.
What that statute does.
And then we go on to Water Quality Act.
Okay.
A small paragraph that explains, maybe not in the document, but maybe as an addendum to the document, so that people, when they read this, would understand what they mean.
The concern of doing it actually in the document is our summary is just going to be an interpretation of those.
Yeah, and hearing.
It is in the document, the summary is just going to be our interpretation, unless we took literally verbatim the purpose, which is usually in most acts. And that would bind an accounting trace of incident, it is our interpretation. If we had it not as an official ordinance, I'd have to look at that a little closer, but legally, I think there would be some concerns just summarizing the documents within an ordinance.
Director Springfield?
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, we have done a summary of each of these. We've provided them to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Their request is that we put it in plain English, so that people can understand it better, so we will work with Counselor in trying to do that. I've already also told the Planning and Zoning Commission that we would be able to post that information on the website. This is going to be a whole category all to itself, so we're taking notes on everything that everybody's asking for, and we've already agreed to that. We'll work with Counsel on putting it in plain English, and then we will post that on the web.
Okay, Commissioner Howes, so just for clarity, what we're talking about is posting it on the county's website versus anything added to this document that we're looking at tonight. Okay, moving on, and in time along the way here, feel free if you have a question or you need clarification as to what it is we're doing. So I think I covered 3.1, did I not? Then three?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Director Springfield?
Just going back to 2.1 real quick, there was a request by the Planning Commission that they include the hyperlink to the administrative code. That's not on this document, however, when it is posted on the web, it will have that hyperlink.
Okay, okay, very good, very good. So why don't you explain, Director Springfield, you and Counselor Smallwood, what it is we're doing in Section 3.1? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but go ahead.
3.1, Mr. Chairman, is actually the heart of this ordinance. It was not included in the draft that we got. The intent was clear. That was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. It removes oil and gas from the SU District and puts it in RRA under permissive use.
Okay, does anybody need clarification as to what we're doing here? Because this is a permitting process to deal with the oil and gas ordinance if you want to cut into San Manuel County drill wet. And that's why it's going to be known as a permissive use versus a special use. Okay, so, and then Article Four basically talks about going at the...
This was also a matter of confusion in the original draft. Planning and Zoning Commission asked for clarification on what is this, how does this work? It works through a permit process, and B being the most important section in this, that it does cover drilling, operation, production, construction, gathering lines, and discharge. So you have to get one permit instead of having to come back every time you amend your OCD permit. You just get one from the county.
Okay, thank you very much. And then that covers A, B, and C, pretty much, and Article Four. Article, or Second Four, when you get into Paragraph B, we're talking about the permanent application, and I mean, there's the scope of operations, the contact information, the cycling, I mean, these are all of the checkboxes that we set, we wanted to have in the soil and gas ordinance, not just this commission, but the Planning and Zoning Commission. You'll notice on Paragraph D, what the set app is that's called for in the ordinance, 750 feet. And then there is some clarification on the noise portion of the ordinance, and I noticed that some of the language, unless it's in there and I don't see it, I'm not seeing it.
On E, Mr. Chairman, after discussing this matter with the staff and Commissioner Stoddard, I had reread that and found that that language does not fit in this ordinance. However, I would tell you that one of the issues, and I've discussed this with Counsel, is how would we enforce this? Enforcement, as I've read from all over the country, differs all over the place. It can be at the point of the site, it can be all the way to the point of complaint. We're recommending that we would do it from the point of complaint.
Okay, but I thought that was the language that was going to be added.
I can't include it when there doesn't fit, it's an enforcement issue.
Ah, okay, okay.
This is an application issue.
All right, okay, so then, the rest of that page is road plan, emergency response plan. Sure?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Howes.
So if I were reading this, I look under F, and I share this information with the Director, but there ought to be some financial assurance for broken maintenance, and how the operator will contribute to maintenance, or identify roads that ought to be included. G, there ought to be some identification of what financial assistance there is to emergency response plan. And then F, you know, the new landfills, there's some pollution prevention, but to ensure the ability to cover mitigation expenses, I feel that should be something in that area. And then one of the things that was included in our earlier discussions about SOP was a terrain management plan, and I don't see, or begins to be somewhere in there, what the terrain management plan would be, if that was to be an L, or whether it's covering the other ways.
Okay, at this point, I think we can move on, we'll come back to those items. So moving on through the document, there aren't any other changes on Page Four in regards to Article Five, drilling requirements?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of comments on Page Four.
Okay, Commissioner Howes.
Under Section 5.5, where it says prudent operator, I think, terminology that includes consistent with industry best practices should be included in 5.5. Under 5.6, there should be a waste management plan. And 5.7, again, that'd be some reference to utilization of industry best practices.
What was the last one?
5.7, underwater protection. There should be some terminology in there that the operator will utilize industry best practices.
So basically, what you're volunteering is different language than what's in there?
Correct.
And you feel like best practices better covers than reasonable measures to ensure?
Yes.
Okay, good enough.
And that was 5.5, too, also, correct?
Yes.
Director Springfield was taking the salt down.
He also has a copy, doesn't he?
I do.
Yep, and I have that same copy.
Yes.
Then, insurance requirements per the P&amp;Z Commission, they're okay with the language that's in here. Just so the public knows, this board is required by statute to post this document, and you're going to have check listings to look at before this body can even vote on it. So this is a work in progress, same document that the P&amp;Z Commission was using the other night in their meeting. Let's see, other changes were...
Other than your insurance.
I'm sorry, go ahead, do you have something?
Under 6.2?
Just want to hear, yes.
My umbrella policy is a million dollars. I'm concerned, what the industry usually expects in this area, but I'm thinking that the minimum single limit ought to be higher than what's listed in here. And under 6.3, under self-insurance, it says unencumbered assets, but I think there ought to be a demonstration of liquid assets to be able to cover a specific thing.
Page Six, Article Eight, we're talking about procedures and fees, and there was the phrase in the word permit and application added several times. If you look at your document, you can see the words that are in red, or the words that were added to the document. Maybe Director Springfield can add a little bit of clarification as to why those words were added.
It was changed, Mr. Chairman, because we had clarified that what the applicant needs to do is come and get a permit from the county, instead of simply giving the county notice. If you look in your first, the draft that was submitted by Commissioner Stoddard, all that was required was that the industry give the county notice. Under this one, they are required to get a permit from the county, so everywhere where it said notice, it had to be changed to permit or permit application.
And I'd also like to point out that there is a fee that the county charges in this permitting process is allowed for one well at a time.
Correct.
So if an operator wanted to come in and do, say, three wells on a piece of land, they would have to effectively make one application, but pay three fees. Have I got that correct, Director?
Administratively, it would work that way.
Okay.
There would be three separate forms filled out, but it would all be filled out at the same time.
So, Mr. Chairman, before we get away from...
Yeah, Commissioner Howes, 2.1.
I guess I need an explanation of what happens when I get a director reviews an application within 10 days. Is that reasonable time, or is that following an OCD review that's a longer period of time? Or help me understand.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yeah, Director Springfield.
Because we changed it from notice to application, one, two, three, four, the fourth line down, last sentence, complete, would need to be changed to approve.
Okay, I see that.
See that?
The complete sentence is, the review of the application shall be finished by the Director of Planning and Zoning Division or the directors designated within 10 days of submission, or else it will be deemed approved.
Correct. This is similar to what you have in your subdivision ordinance. Within your subdivision ordinance, you have a final plan requirement review process required by state statute. You have 45 days to act on that application, if not, then it's deemed approved. It's similar to that.
So for a subdivision, it's 45 days, but for this kind of application, it's 10 days.
Well, I do practice.
Well, I mean, the point being, when the operator comes to the county, they've already received their permit from OCD.
Yep, that's the point I wanted to clarify.
So we suspect that they will have their application package once they have their permit. So they'll have, it's reverse of the way CID deals with us. What we do is help the applicants on a home plant, put their packet together and the correct information together, put that in with the application, and then it goes to CID. In this case, it's going to go to OCD first, reapproved, and then compliance.
So should there be some indication in there that kind of describes that situation, so that people reading this ordinance will understand that? That's a question.
Can I ask Mr. Chairman to answer?
Okay. What was the question again?
Should there be some reference to the fact of the process? Because when you read this, it sounds like, ten days, we got it, run away. But if there was some understanding that this has already been used...
It's hard to hear you, you need to speak more into the microphone, Mr. Chairman.
Typically, and understand that we're also going to be doing an SOP that goes along with this, if this is the document.
See, I didn't understand that.
Yes, sir.
Should that reference be referenced in here somewhere?
We could do that.
Yeah.
Reference SOP to reply. The problem is, and that we have this discussion, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, at the P&amp;Z staff right at the moment, what we're doing is we're going from this idea to this idea to this idea, and what we're ending up having to do, the Planning Commission is asking that we show our work product before they even consider legislation. So that means going through, doing the SOP, and then all the way to the point where they're asking for a copy of what will the permit look like. From staff's point of view, this gets kind of hard at a point, when we don't know what the legislation is going to be. Once we find out what the legislation is going to be, then we can start going through and doing the administrative processes, explaining to ourselves and explaining to the applicants how the process works, and then coming up with a proper paperwork. That's typically how legislation works for us. And what we do is, we set it all up within a 30-day time period, between the time the legislation has approved, and the waiting period until it becomes effective, and we have all of that done in, and within 30 days. That's typically how we do it.
And I think that explanation is important to understand what Director Springfield's talking about. So if this ordinance is enacted, that's when P&amp;Z will take direction and start developing, you know, the necessary documents for the permitting process, everything else.
And we've committed in this process to bringing that SOP, whether it has to be physically approved by you or not, at least bringing this through the P&amp;Z and this body, so you know what those SOPs say.
And that will be subsequent to the enactment of the ordinance. All right, thank you very much, Director Springfield. So moving right along, there are a couple of other words that have been added to the document in Paragraph 9.1, the word division, following planning and zoning, just more clarification, I guess, there's same thing in Paragraph 9.2. Now, in those two paragraphs, we're talking about noncompliance and violations. Anything to add, Commissioner?
Well, the one thing I do want to say is that this wording that has been added under violations, I think is much more comprehensive than what I've implied.
You're talking about Page Seven?
Yeah, all the red.
Yeah, yeah.
That comes right out of the zoning ordinance, Commissioner. Also, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There was a question on willfully violates. That came up at the P&amp;Z also, and it's come up in other discussions with other people. We feel confident that Counsel can speak to this, but we feel confident that if you go through the noncompliance process, and the county has put an applicant on notice that you are in violation, and they don't comply within 60 days, they are in essence willfully violating this ordinance. And as such, rather than going through the step, three-step process that we normally go through, you would automatically jump to citation, and we would reference it for legal action.
Correct. And one final thing, on Page Seven, in the red, we do have the fine as being $300. That actually is the maximum the county can ask us for a fine. We are limited in that.
By law?
By statute, yes.
State or...
State. And that's for any zoning violation, any county ordinance violation. There's some exceptions for things like DUIs and things like that, but for normal county ordinance, that's those.
So what we're talking about is the, a fine for violation of the ordinance. And what Counselor said was that by state statute, the county is only allowed to fine someone $300. Yeah, it's not a lot of money, but short of changing state statute, that's what we're stuck with. Okay, so what we've done, I shouldn't say that, there's two other paragraphs on the last page, the signature page, of course, these are common to any kind of ordinance. Yep. Inseverability, which means that enforcement survives if a portion of it is found to be unlawful?
Correct.
Pretty close, right? And then effective date, when it would be signed off on. Now...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Howes.
You had questioned whether I thought the wording that proposed was better than reasonable.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm sure that if you go through this room, there's a whole bunch of people that are going to think that parts of this are reasonable and parts that are unreasonable.
I don't think there's any doubt about that.
But if you use consistent with industry best practices, industry certainly knows what the best practice is, whereas reasonable is a less clear definition of the expectation.
I love it. I find it, for sure, I like that expression. I don't think the P&amp;Z commissioners would have any problem with it either. But yeah, there may be some folks in the room who don't agree with that. So process, now that we've walked through the document, there's 398 words of difference between the original one I gave you two weeks ago. P&amp;Z vetted this thing for three and a half hours the other night. They directed staff, P&amp;Z staff, to tweak the document and put in the changes that are in there. So essentially, what we have is a document now that Planning and Zoning would agree with. Now, 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 don't, don't get carried away, don't get carried away. Let me give you a little bit more clarification. I watched the meeting, like, the entire meeting, and I heard every one of you in the audience that spoke that night, and this is what transpired. P&amp;Z gave staff direction to work with Mr. Stoddard's document, and essentially put in the document those things that they wanted in it. That took place, that, that's how we arrived at this document. Just remember, you're going to have two weeks, the public is going to have two weeks to weigh in on this document and address this commission before we vote on it. But we, I want to take care of public comment, and then I want to circle back around with the commission as to what next steps we can take with this document. And I want to give a little bit of clarification before we get into public comment. Maybe I can answer some of your questions before you come up. So one of the questions that I heard the other night during the P&amp;Z meeting was, why was this on tonight's agenda? And the reason why it was on the county commission's agenda for tonight is that the commission can work concurrently with P&amp;Z to produce an ordinance. We don't necessarily have to wait 30 days or any period of time to look at what's been produced by P&amp;Z for our consideration. So that's one of the reasons why we did it. The other reason is this, for almost two years now, San Manuel County has not produced an ordinance that governs oil and gas operations in San Manuel County. And I want to thank those on the P&amp;Z Commission who finally produced an ordinance that I think is really reflective of what the commission was looking for in terms of an ordinance, and something that we could agree with. As you can see, even going through the process tonight, there's some tweaks and some suggestions, and I welcome... And I welcome any other further suggestions tonight before we move forward. So let's do the public comment unless there are some other questions or comments from the commissioners before we get into the public comment. Dave Hyatt, we've heard from you a lot. Commissioner Michael, Commissioner Block?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions and, well, not questions, more concerns. I can speak to this now before the public. My main concern, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, is this document is not on the agenda for the public to look at. It's the first time I've seen this document. I haven't had a chance to review it. You know, we just talked, we just had the treasurer in here, and she sent us an email yesterday, and we were upset because she sent us an email yesterday for her to talk about the treasure report today. So why are we expected to vote on this, to publish it today after I haven't seen it?
Well, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I talked to my P and Z commissioner today, Mr. Keith Brown, and I guess there was a meeting today. I wasn't aware of it. Mr. Brown wasn't aware of it. I asked him if he has seen the document. He said no. He was a little upset. Actually, he was very upset about it, and he has some choice words for me. It was his understanding, it was my understanding, that the P and Z commission was to have a work session on 5 September.
Exactly.
And at that work session, don't, don't, don't interrupt. I'm on a roll, all right? Just give me a few minutes here, because this is important. You know, Mr. Brown asked me today, and he shot me an email, and I texted, and I wrote it down. He was like, why am I here wasting my time if I'm, if I'm not involved? Maybe I should resign. So my own P and Z commissioner had no idea this was going on today, hasn't seen this document, and was under the assumption we were going to vote on this, oh, I'm sorry, not vote, have a work session on 5 September. That way, the public can be involved, the oil and gas industry can be involved, which is important for them to be involved. It's also important for New Mexico Tech, it's important for the state to be involved. The way this, the way this happened is, it goes against everything that we stand for when it comes to transparency, and I'm not going to support it. I didn't have, when he asked me if he should resign, I didn't have a good answer for him. I hope he doesn't resign, but he's very upset about this. Bottom line, you know, I sat here two months ago with a Placitas issue related to the Balkan mine, and I got a settlement document on a Wednesday morning, and I was expected to vote for it on Thursday. Now, this is not the way I do business personally. I'm not going to get a document that I have not seen before, had time to digest and get answers from my constituents. By the way, I support the oil and, oil and gas industry. I support them. But I support you, the public. You're more important to hear what you have to say. And I want to hear what the oil and gas industry has to say, because they're an important player in this, no doubt about it. But the way this is going down here with no public review, I can't see it. The only thing on the website is the old document. That's not helpful. You guys need to see this document. And I am not going to vote for this and push this through, no matter how much I support the oil and gas industry to do safe operations in this county. This is the wrong way to do business for this county. And I can't, and I can't support it. I'd be going against everything else I've said over the past nine months I've been in office when it comes to public transparency. Did you know about the meeting? Did you know about the meeting?
I knew there was a meeting.
My P and Z commissioner, no, he's on the P and Z. The plan of attack was, you meet on 5 September, you have the work session, you get the oil and gas industry there, you get the public there, you get New Mexico Tech there, you hammer this out, you give it to us to vote so we can put this to bed. And I'm looking forward to having a good ordinance that we can pass so we can do safe operations. But I'll be damned if I'm going to vote for this before my constituents have seen it. I haven't seen it. I will not support this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Hyatt?
I spoke with my P and Z commissioner yesterday, and he indicated that on September 5, they were going to have a work session where they would kind of fill in the blanks on the ordinance that was being proposed. Well, my P and Z commissioner said that they had a good skeleton ordinance, but they had a lot of meat to put into that, into that ordinance. I also attended a tri-chapter meeting in Councils, New Mexico, yesterday along with Chief Maxton. All three chapters, the Ohonzino chapter, the Councils chapter, and the Torreon chapter, all indicated that they wanted to see an ordinance before the commission voted on, and they wanted that prior to that. So I had to look at what my constituents in that area want to see. I again agree with Commissioner Block to the fact that, you know, we need to look at things prior to them coming to us on a day's notice. And I didn't, I didn't know about the meeting that was occurring today, nor had I seen the document until just a few minutes ago. There's a lot of things that I want to see in a document. Fire and safety, the, you know, right now, the only area in this county that has oil and gas is my district. Yet, you know, our oil, our fire and safety people don't have the equipment to be able to, to fire a fire up there in regards to oil and gas, nor are they trained in any form or manner to do that. I think those things are need to be brought into, need to play. So the industry, the industry, the oil industry should be, and I'm sure that they would welcome training our people in this community and this county to be able to, to help, help them do their job. So it's important in that aspect. The other thing too is that, you know, Commissioner, Chief Maxton and I went around up in that area looking at the oil and gas industry that's up in that 15, 16 wells within about, probably a two-square-mile deal. Trucks are in and out, trucks are in and out, and that's good. I mean, I see that as profitable for, for the county and everything else. But I'll tell you one thing, I'm, I'm very concerned about some of the roads that get up there. You know, these big trucks, they chain up, they tear up roads in a matter of a day. All it has to do is rain, snow, or whatever, and guess what? Our people don't go and get to school that day because they can't get in and out of those routes. And, and all those issues, there's still a lot of stuff that needs to be tweaked in this thing. Again, you know, I really do support, you know, that, that we have some economic development as far as the oil and gas industry, but it needs to be done correctly. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't support this either at this point in time. I need to see, hopefully, that the P and Z puts some meat into, into what they have here. I think this is, I think we have some starts of some good documents here, but it's not finished, by no means. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hyatt. Go, Commissioner Hyatt.
Yeah, I guess I just want to point out to my fellow commissioners, first of all, I'm just a little concerned about how we got this document back and the fact that the public hasn't seen it, we're sitting up here having a conversation. But I want to point out, the item on the agenda is not to vote on anything. The item on the agenda is only to discuss it. There'll be no vote this evening one way or another with regard to this. And some guidance, instead of playing the battleship game with the planning and zoning board, it will give them some feedback as to some thoughts that you might have with regard to this.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hyatt. I would just like a few more clarification comments. So the P and Z commission on Tuesday night vetted the document, and they directed, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Springfield, they directed P and Z Commissioner Dan Stoddard to sit with staff and develop the suggestions that they made during the meeting as to how they wanted the document tweaked. Now, you know, I can understand, you know, not everybody being notified that Commissioner Stoddard was going to do that within 48 hours, but he did. And that's how the document ended up here tonight. I had it on the agenda. In the, in the thought process that if P and Z did produce a document that the commission could look at for the first time, that would be representative of the oil and gas ordinance, then we would have the opportunity to do so. And we, do you want to add to that, Director Springfield?
I do, Mr. Chairman. I think everybody needs to know that we were directed, first of all, to get with Commissioner Stoddard, go through this ordinance and put it in legislative form and in legal form, and then get back to them at their work session with that amended document. It's going to be on the 5th or the 6th, we don't know yet. But in terms of our schedule, I want to, we had to move fast. I wanted to see what you guys were going to be telling us this evening, and I have a requirement to get our agenda out tomorrow to make the work session. So I have to find out what we're going to do tonight, then I have to put an agenda together, post that on the web, and then get that out to my P and Z commissioners tomorrow.
And just to add to that, I mean, nobody's, nobody's, in fact, I've said it several times in county commission meetings, that this board is not going to usurp the authority of the P and Z commission. We want something to come out of the P and Z commission that this board can look at and make a decision on as to whether we support it or not. And in essence, that's what's happening tonight. Yeah, the document arrived fairly recently for you to look at, but this is the whole purpose of us to discuss tonight, the makings of an ordinance, and weigh in on it. Now, we do have the opportunity to take one more step, and I'm not going to talk about that right now because I don't want to get into public comment because I think it's time to do that. However, guess what? We need to take a five-minute recess so that the people that are captioning this meeting can keep up with us tonight. So we're going to take a five-minute recess, we're going to come right back. All right, we're going to come back in. Thank you very much. We're going to start public comment as it relates to Agenda Number Eight, and I would like to call up Donna Dowell first. Remember, three minutes.
Commissioner Chapman, could I give my slot to someone and then speak later if there's time? Do you know about that?
If you don't want to speak now, when do you want to speak?
I would take the other person's slot.
Who's the other person?
Mary Felton.
No, no, you speak, Donna, this is important.
Okay.
Thank you, Block.
All right, Ms. Dowell, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Chapman and Commissioner, commissioners.
Use the microphone, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Donna Dowell. I'm a nurse practitioner, and I've worked in Sandoval County for many, many years and lived here, worked in some of the communities, the pueblos, the nubanca. I was a school nurse, I worked in all the schools here in Burnaleo, the school district. I just have a lot of history with the, with the county, but currently I live in Placitas. And I'm going to talk about economic impact, accountability, and liability regarding oil and gas ordinance. In my opinion, the best strategy for sustainable economic development is diversification, a pro-business approach that supports opportunity for all business development, not just oil and gas, farming, tourism, recreation, clean energy. The reality is, more often than not, communities are negatively impacted by oil and gas production, leading to less diverse economy, the boom and bust, right? I ask myself, I wonder, if oil and gas has been here for so long in New Mexico, and they've given so much, contributed so much to our economy and to our state, then why are we still struggling? Why do we still struggle with unemployment, with poverty, with early childhood, with health issues? I also wonder if we have all these thousands of pages of federal and state laws that we also comply to, why so much, still so much environmental damage and public health issues like asthma related to industry? These issues are increasingly prevalent with the practice of fracking, not just the old-time oil and gas extraction. Unchecked oil and gas production increases costs of road maintenance, public safety, health services, puts strain on emergency responsive environmental monitoring and cleanup, and negatively affects property values, just to mention a few of the many local, negative local economic impacts of oil and gas production. Accountability. Please be accountable to us and to the applicants from responsible oil and gas companies. Don't be afraid of being considered anti-oil and gas. I'm trying to really understand why we don't want to, as a county, adopt comprehensive and balanced and durable oil and gas ordinance. You are accountable to all of us. We all want to work with you, the tribes, the town of Burnaleo, the county residents, independent, technical, and legal specialists. Not all of us are environmentalists. And we're not against oil and gas. A balanced oil and gas ordinance keeps in check an industry that is known to pollute in excess. You cannot expect the industry to protect us. We expect that our lawmakers will protect our health, safety, and water. This is your mandate, your oath, be accountable. There's no clear process for oil and gas ordinance development, at least not from the public point of view. There's no set process here in kind that the public can follow. Sorry, I didn't get to read the rest of mine. But thank you for the opportunity.
I heard it Tuesday night.
You did?
I did, yes. Thank you so much.
And I tweaked it.
My name is Joanna Yum. I'm from Placitas. And I first, before I get into my comment, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for your diligence to transparency, which is, it might be the very foundation of democracy, so I appreciate that. Like I said, my, well, my comment is actually a question for this commission, and it's regarding this study that's due in May of 2018, that's being conducted by Mr. Ron Broadhead of the New Mexico Bureau of Geology and Mineral Resources. It's the New Mexico Tech study, I believe, that it was referred to here. So this bureau just posted a news article that I'd like to read a little bit from. They posted it on August 11th, which was 13 days ago, about entering into an agreement with Sandoval County to quote, "Assess the potential for economically viable oil and natural gas resources in Sandoval County." The article continues by saying, "As well as assessing and mapping the oil and natural gas potential throughout the county, the research will illustrate the stratigraphic relationship of potentially productive strata to aquifer, barren strata." The news article also mentions that even though oil and gas production has existed in the northwestern part of the county for 50 years, quote, "Recent efforts to drill and explore Turobo, the city of Rio Rancho, have raised concerns about the possibility of contamination of aquifers by productive oil and gas wells in urban setting." The article concludes by saying, "This study will provide the county's planning and zoning staff with an unbiased scientific report, which they can incorporate into their work." So my question is, why is this board attempting to adopt an ordinance well in advance of this assessment report requested by you, Sandoval County? A study funded by our taxpayer dollars? I, I, I just, why would the commission forego a quote, "Unbiased scientific report" that will directly and specifically address the numerous concerns of the people of Sandoval County regarding their aquifers in proximity to potentially oil-bearing strata? So finally, I want to conclude by saying that I, I think we can draft a robust and thorough oil and gas ordinance, but it must be drafted with input from these quote, "Unbiased scientific reports," as well as independent experts in order to protect people and invaluable resources of Sandoval County. San Miguel has done their due diligence with a strong oil and gas ordinance. Santa Fe County has a strong oil and gas ordinance. The Higuaria tribe have a strong ordinance that allows for drilling with strong protections for their people. So I'm asking you to please look to those counties. So I'm asking you to please look to those counties in drafting this ordinance and do the same for your constituents here in Sandoval County by drafting a strong ordinance for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yum. Randy Erickson?
Commissioner, Chairman Chapman, Councilmember Block, Mike Holden, I'll guess I'll announce three minutes this time. I was really fortunate at the meeting on Tuesday night to be able to go on and on and on. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. Before I get into what's now become quite revised, I wanted to speak to what Commissioner Block started out with, and I wanted to thank him for the comments. There's quite a few statements of hate and racism coming out, and anyone hurts a lot of us. It hurts us if we see our friends and neighbors being directed at them. And I think a lot of us feel like, at least a lot of people I know, feel like it's coming directly from the president. And it's up to us to speak out, to call out anyone who is directing that at anybody or any set of group of people that doesn't belong in our country, where it's not what we're made of. And I think even in a chamber like this, we can learn things to be able to work together and work towards common solutions without having to blame and without having to throw hate and seriously vile stuff at each other. The rest of my comments are really about the ethics of what's going on here. It appears as if the Board of County Commissioners is so eager to get this oil and gas ordinance passed that it's really circumventing the authority and mandate given to your own P&amp;Z commission. I know that it's your prerogative to circumvent the commission, it will, but they have a mandate and it should be respected. Mr. Chairman, on the Board's July 27th meeting, twice Director Springfield asked the Board to give him authority to proceed on oil and gas SOPs without the approval of the P&amp;Z commission. It was shocking and embarrassing for us to hear that coming from a public servant. I want to read what Chairman Chapman said to what the response to that request. I have a real problem with that. I want to be real careful. I don't want to have the P&amp;Z Board feel that the commission is usurping their responsibility and authority. I want the P&amp;Z Board to be on board with this. I wanted to know the reason why the vote didn't happen last night, because the chairman wanted this thing to sink in a little bit with everybody so that they're all on board. It's my understanding that the chairman felt that this was not a consensus. I'm sensitive to the fact that the P&amp;Z Board absolutely has to do the job, unquote. Chairman Chapman, I really respect that statement.
Aye.
Commissioner Block and Hile, I call the House will very much respect your comments tonight. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, Mr. Erickson. Next up is Barbara Snow.
My name is Barbara Snow. I moved here in May of this year, and I want to say the same things that we just heard from the other people. I give emphasis to what they said. My question is, why are we in such a rush? I keep hearing that we've been working on this for eighteen months. I would like to know how many hours were put into this. I would like to know why we are not getting an opportunity to see what's going on and to have more people input. I would also like to know, has there been any geological studies done? Have there been any seismic studies done? We have all kinds of faults around here. I would like to know why we're giving more diversity in a place that is just begging for diversity. We have solar, we have wind, we have geothermal. None of that takes power drinking water, the water we need to survive. None of that has impact on our cattle that are out there, ranging at our ranchers. None of that needs extra roads. None of that needs rear interior on the roads we have. The question, how are they going to get all that equipment out to the West Mesa? Is it going to be southern? Is it going to be northern? Is it going to be Highway 550? How are we going to be impacted by that? We already have trouble getting around. There's just too many questions, not enough answers, and you're not giving us enough time to study what's happening and get some more answers. I think more knowledgeable people need to be brought in to do good studies and find out what's the best for Sandoval County, because that's what we need. We're good, we need the best. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Snow. Up next is Jack Richardson. Did you state your address, sir? I didn't get it on the signage.
Yes, P.O. Box 20100, Albuquerque, New Mexico. My name is Jack Richardson. I'm here to talk about this. I grew up in New Mexico. I moved back about five years ago to personally work on this project. I'm what you call a landman. I personally spent months working on the title work and leases for this project, so I answer a considerably large amount of information on the project. I think it's important to know that a lot of individuals in Rio Rancho own royalty interests under this property that they don't know about, and I would encourage them to further research that. It's on the public records downstairs. Mr. Jay Block spoke on Unity, and I'd like to kind of make a reference between Unity and regulation. I personally own mineral rights and royalty interests in multiple states all over the country, and I also own mineral and royalty interests in Sandoval and Burnaleo County. And I support regulation, but I think it's possible to regulate industry out, and I think that's what we're seeing in San Miguel, Santa Fe, and eastern Rio Grande County. I encourage you to reach out to them, reach out to their clerks, ask them how they're doing financially. I know I can speak for Rio Grande County, they've been struggling a lot recently, and they're very excited about the increase in oil prices. And then furthermore, I would encourage everybody in the room to go to an OCD hearing. The OCD hearings are open for public comment. It's typically a person with a JD, a geophysicist, a geologist, and you can ask them as many questions as you want, and any well that's drilled in the state of New Mexico is open for public question and comment. And I think, you know, like I said, I'm in support of the ordinance, but I think if that ordinance gets, you know, six pages is good. If we start getting to the eight and ten pages, any more than that, what you're going to see is no drilling in this area, and it's really going to affect a lot of people. So I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Up next is Stephen Palmer.
My name is Stephen Palmer. I reside at four, Calle Pueblosa, in Placitas. Chairman Chapman and Commissioners Block, Mike Holden, and Hile, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'm speaking to you as a deeply concerned citizen and homeowner in Sandoval County. I'm here to urge you strongly to go slow and steady on approving an oil and gas ordinance. We need one that really works. Overall, my gravest concern about proposed ordinance is almost exclusively a mere notification process. Virtually nothing is said about content review, about public hearings, about an appeal process, or about remotely adequate compliance mechanisms, all of which are essential. I believe it would be a serious mistake to move forward with the starter document as the sole or even the primary basis of regulating oil and gas production in Sandoval County. Here are some of the problems I see. In Article VII on Procedure and Fees, it says, under Review of Notice, the proposed ordinance only specifies that the notice, now called a permit, shall be reviewed for completeness, that is, just for filling out the right documents. There's nothing about the county actually reviewing the documents to make sure that the content meets the county's requirements. This is not acceptable. Moreover, the proposed ordinance specifies that the review process must be completed within ten days, or else it will be deemed to be complete. That's crazy.
That's crazy.
And it seems to me that it's an open invitation for lawsuits that will cost the county a lot of money. In addition, there's no mention of any sort of public hearing. Surely the concerns of the community deserve the right to be heard, and surely that cannot happen within ten days. There's a number of drilling notification requirements that are specified, such as the immersion response plan, surface owner protection, air quality protection, and water quality protection, in which the operator is required to pledge compliance with the certifications mentioned, but none of the following are specified. Who's going to assess whether the applicant has actually complied? Who's going to pay for that assessment? How about the oil and gas industry? And what happens if the applicant doesn't comply? At least they should be covered in Article VIII on Enforcement, but that section is relatively toothless. It doesn't address either of those concerns, who's going to assess for compliance or how it's going to be paid for. But most importantly, the fines it mentions are totally inadequate. What we need is serious consequence, like revoking the permit for somebody who doesn't comply or violates.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Alan Friedman.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Bob Wesley. Those of you who know me and Bob Wesley know that I am not Bob Wesley. And Bob said that since he is not medically up to attending in person, he wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak and read his comments on his behalf. But before I do, I wanted to say something about Commissioner Block. Commissioner Block and I have not known each other for very long, and Commissioner Block knows, kind of, I'm called Jay, you guys call him Jay. Commissioner Block knows I'm a Democrat, and I know he's a Republican. He thinks we're on separate sides. We're not on separate sides. We may have different views on the issues, but we are committed to protect the public while having oil and gas come to the county. That's what I wanted to say. And Jay, you're an humble person, and I respect you. Thank you. Here's what Bob asked me to read. "Please reject Agenda Item 8. Publishing and posting either of the two existing oil and gas ordinance drafts, staffed by Mr. Stotters, would be a serious mistake. It would expose the county to significant legal liability. Neither draft acknowledges the well-vacuumated track record of the oil and gas industry for risk of pollution, accidents, and other surface impacts. Besides the extensive public testimony, the official record of submissions to Sandoval County for this legislation includes several hundred studies, articles, and reports indicating the extent of local on-surface problems due to the industry, that the problems are almost invariably stemmed from loose regulation or lax enforcement. Your current draft ignores these risks. The record for this legislation includes at least two several-hour commissioning sessions, where expert industry proponents described how benign the industry is and that vocal regulation was unnecessarily undesirable. The record also shows that you refuse to invite experts to address you on the potential downside of the industry presence. You appear to be deliberately closing your eyes and ears to the risk. Numerous studies show that between five and ten percent of oil and gas wells leak. When one of the hundreds of wells leak pollutants into the Albuquerque Opera, there will be an investigation. When the record shows how Sandoval County turned a blind eye to imposing reasonable regulations with reasonable levels of enforcement, the county tax queries will be in deep legal duty. Please reject Agenda Item 8. Let the Planning and Zoning Commission work up a well-balanced, competent oil and gas ordinance that welcomes the oil and gas industry and concurrently protects the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens."
Thank you, Dr. Friedman. Appreciate you. Ben Dowell.
I'm here, thank you, Mr. Chairman Chapman, and I would like to address this issue. I believe that our new ordinance, whatever it looks like, should require not only permit issued by the OCD, but also, I would like to see a requirement for a permit from the county that would be required, that would cover the drilling of one well at a time. This way, every aspect of the project would have standards to be met by the drilling company. There should be an environmental aspect, such that the physical environment conditions in the vicinity of the project, at the beginning of the project, before a new well is drilled, or before a new pipeline gatherer is installed, or a new holding tank is put in, that something as simple as having pictures of the vicinity be taken that show visually the meaningful area with the new drilling or oil and gas pipeline, updated connections, and so forth. I also have some thoughts concerning monitoring and enforcement. If a spill is reported, or evidence of gas, nitrogen, sulfide, or methane is leaked, and this leakage is reported to the OCD, there should be a hearing officer that would be employed by the county who will set up a hearing for the driller to explain what happened. This information should then be recorded in a special incident file, and it will be searchable by driller's name, by date of incident, by reason for spill or leakage, and by date of reporting by the driller. There should be a recorded measurement of spill volume, if it is wastewater or oil release or natural gas release, and I'm talking about in the county, not by the state, because the state already does this kind of thing. Since the state OCD will be providing their inspectors to oversee the measurement of the spill or leakage, our hearing officer would work with the state inspectors to allow the most accurate and timely information. There should also be a set of baseline measurements that are required for every well that is drilled. This would include such measurements as benzene in the soil nearby the well and the associated equipment. There is a complete neglect of the many issues that go along with the fracking wells, which would quickly grow to large numbers. Or is the public hearing described in ordinance proposed by Commissioner Stotter? Part of the party was that Mike Springfield waived the public hearing in the sandwich case.
Mr. Howard, thank you. Appreciate it. Next up, Mike Lees.
Mr. Chair, I think Mr. Suazo and the Minats were ahead of me. And Mr. Ryan Offler.
Actually, they signed up on the ordinance, but I am going to let them speak for sure. Come on upstairs.
I would have appreciated to hear what they had to say so that I could comment.
Well, then, you...
Up...
Yeah, you can hear what they have to say.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
And Commissioners, I thank you for allowing the discussion earlier tonight on the hate and the racism topics. I think it's very important that periodically you digress and talk on... and talk on quick events, current events. And I do appreciate that talk. I do not condone that kind of activity. And it's unfortunate. You will see me get a little animated sometimes, but you'll never hear me yell, or call names, or that kind of thing. And I don't condone it. I do want to talk about the document that was on the agenda tonight, but was a different document was talked about. It's the optics of the thing. I've heard that said before. It's not good optics to be talking... Oh, and just earlier, I had even heard you, Mr. Chair, say something to the treasurer about a 72-hour rule. And yet, we didn't comply with that rule tonight. So it's the optics of the thing. I think also tonight, the county commission might have had better topics to discuss, and more important topics than to take away from the Planning and Zoning Commission an issue that you had specifically given to them. And I remember at one meeting, I think it was the May 12, 2017 meeting, and, Mr. Chair, you said that the worst thing the government can do is create confusion. Why am I here tonight? I should be at a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I should not be coming to talk about this until the Planning and Zoning Commission sends it back to you. I really would appreciate for you to allow those Planning and Zoning commissioners to do their work, and not to undermine them in any way. It just feels to me, I've said it before, I feel like a ping pong ball. I'm being played. But now I see that not only am I being played, and all these people in the room are being played. The department is being played. And now I see that the Planning and Zoning Commission is being played also. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Neese. Up next is, I'm not sure I'm going to get this right, but I'm going to finish out a Stephen Burcinski.
Before we get started, you see an S-K-I, the person's name, just break it out with the consonants and vowels, syllableize it, and you'll be right about 95% of the time.
Please use your microphone tighter.
Chairman Chapman, Commissioner of Sanibel County. My name is Stephen Burcinski. I serve as the current chair of the Albuquerque Metropolitan Area Green Party, which includes members of Sanibel County. And I have a professional degree in natural resources management policy. Worked for BLM Lands and Realty. And it's important for you to know that I have done oil and gas field checks, environmental and economic assessments, all to prevent harm to the public. Also taught land use planning to county and municipal officials. And I taught environmental science as college instructor. And I once heard that just because you can do something does not mean that you should go ahead and do it. There's liberty to take, but the true freedom is also responsibility and restraint, which I think I'm starting to see here today, which is putting it off forward in time period. So submitted to you was 250 megabytes of documentation to prep you with regards to what's happening with oil and gas and what needs to be in effective ordinance. I was told this material presented for the public record, and listen carefully, "for your review," prior to decision-making, was logged into a paper bag. That's not putting things into the public record. So that disturbed me right off the bat. So I would ask, for example, even as your planning and zoning staff read all those materials? Have they? I don't think so. Have they been to Vernal, Utah, Bakersfield, California, San Juan, and Permian Basins? I have. And is there a discussion here about the differences between the "shalls" that should be in this document versus the "shoulds"? Is this what the public really wants? And do they understand the differences? So I realize that it's a mistake that we should be considering the great authority that you are given. And just tweaking or fine-tuning "shoulds" throughout the document? Should is not shall. That's not fine-tweaking, that's leaving more leeway. Are the outcomes going to be typical? What can you review? Some of the items. No felonies for the people that are coming in here. How about payment of contractors? Timely manner. Do they have the money that's already liquid, as somebody mentioned before?
Time.
So I ask that you defer this as your original... Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Burcinski. Mary Felton.
Good evening, Commissioners. And I am not Bob Wesley. Just to let you know. I'm going to take a little different tack, because I think you've been listening to a lot of different concerns about
Close by the microphone.
Process and substance that needs to go into a good oil and gas ordinance. I just am asking, I hear this 18 months, we've been spending time 18 months. I'm a social scientist, so I like to look at actual dates, numbers, times. And so I have a nice little timeline here. And in fact, this starts with the P&amp;Z hearing on Sandridge. And I think it's important to know that on February 23, Sandridge officially withdrew its application. And it wasn't until March 28, 2016, that the county commission had a work session that authorized... Now, I mean, if you do some numbers, March 28, that's almost April. It's certainly not 18 months. So then what else happened in this time? Well, there were some public meetings led by Nikita Hill in August and September. And then I checked the agendas for P&amp;Z meetings in September and October. Nothing on oil and gas. And then, of course, we had elections. And what we have, not only three new county commissioners, but actually, four of the current county commissioners are new. They were appointed, Aparicio Herrera was appointed in February of 2017, Keith Brown in April, Daniel Stoddard in April, Dennis Torhio in May. So that's four out of the current six, because Bobby Green has resigned from that position. Those are new commissioners dealing with something very, very heavy. As a former Planning and Zoning Commissioner, I really understand the obligations that is important. And that's why it is so critical to allow Planning and Zoning the time to do something. Well, let's go further in this timeline. January through March, there were absolutely no Planning and Zoning meetings. None. So, and three of the four new ones were appointed in April. Obviously, there was a poor problem. And so, again, what should have been done at that time? Were there conversations with Planning and Zoning staff of the tribes, with municipalities? No. Was there interest in getting experts in who were not connected to the Planning and Zoning, to the oil and gas industry? No. In fact, the two work sessions that you all have had have really only had either agency people who are those very much in favor of oil and gas. And I really think, one, we need to give Planning and Zoning the time. This is a serious, serious thing to deal with. And they need to be able to hear from all kinds of experts. And since you no longer have an attorney, I really urge you, well, you've lost your full attorney. And I don't know if she's an expert in environmental law or an expert in oil and gas law. But it seems to me, since I listened to the county commission meeting, it was July 27, there seemed to be a concern that the oil and gas industry was going to sue. Well, it seems to me it behooves you to consider hiring contracting with a lawyer that really knows land use law, really knows oil and gas law and environmental law. So then you really come up with something that is solid and balances oil and gas with the protection of our county.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Felton. Your tough to cut off. Thank you very much. Aida Fierro.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Aida Fierro, the town administrator for the town of Brenner, New York. Here in behalf of Mayor Jack Torres. He has regularly not been here tonight, but I do have a letter from him that I'd like to read. Sanibel County Commissioners, for Mayor Jack Torres, Town of Brenner, New York. Commissioners, I am just looking to read that you are considering action on an oil and gas ordinance that does not even pretend to offer any protections to our county. The proposed ordinance makes a mockery of your responsibility to protect our communities. I would ask why you would even consider this proposal with its clearest regard for the safety and well-being of all of us. I support good business practices that allow private enterprise to succeed, with the understanding that our communities must be protected as well. This is clearly one of those priorities of government. We welcome good growth and development, but only within parameters that maintain and encourage healthy communities. I respectfully request that you go back to the drawing board. Our county is a wonderful place to live and work. We depend on you to institute protections to a good, healthy development while protecting our living environment. Economic growth can be done well. A reasonable, comprehensive ordinance with clear expectations and requirements does not have to be punitive. We rely on our county commissioners to create a framework that is thoughtful and visionary. Your decision will impact all of us and generations to come. Respectfully, Mayor Jack Torres. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fierro. So those that signed up and really wanted to speak to this Agenda Item, ended up going to the bottom of the list, but now's your chance. Let's see, I'm going to start with Miguel Suazo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the commission for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Miguel Suazo, and I'm an energy and natural resources attorney. And I'm representing Thrust Energy, the entity with a significant interest in the decisions made by this commission.
Excuse me, Mr. Suazo, is your cap really loud on here?
Yes, sir, it is.
Move a little closer.
Sure, is that okay? Okay. Because I'm here in that capacity, I'm wondering if I might be able to be given a few more minutes to speak, just because I'd like to address some of your concerns with the ordinance that you raised specifically in terms of where some of the things are addressed. Why not just address them right away? Okay. Well, so I think I'd like to commend the Planning and Zoning Commission for their work over the past few days to make some updates to this ordinance. And I think that it is starting to be an ordinance that adds a bit of predictability. You know, I said this at Planning and Zoning, this is a heavily regulated industry. And there's already 375 pages of regulation at the state level. In addition to guidance books, at the federal level, there's another 200, 300 pages of regulation. Many of them already touch on some of the concerns that some of you have raised, that the audience has raised tonight. In terms of road construction, that's addressed in the OCD regs. Rule 20 goes over that. I can't tell you everything that's... I encourage you to look at that particular rule. And satisfy yourself that that addresses your concerns. Emergency response, that's largely tied to the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security. And there's nuance there that you can see if you go to the website. As far as traffic, OCD does not regulate traffic, but our roads are funded from the state, and they're giving your amount of money every year for the road maintenance. Now, I hear people saying that, oh, there's going to be lots of trucks and that kind of thing. Well, there's lots of trucks that come here already. How many trucks go to Home Depot every day in all kinds of conditions? Access roads are what are actually being built by the oil and gas industry to access the well site. And by OCD regulations, Rule 67, they have to actually restore those lands to the state it was before they were made. So I encourage you to really spend some time. I can tell that P&amp;Z has really spent a lot of time on this already. I think we're headed in the right direction. But we've been here for over 18 months. And the reason why that matters is because it's our capital that's stranded. I'm here with a small family business that's trying to do some development. And we hear people calling for economic diversity. But they're doing so by discriminating against a clear economic opportunity. So I thank you for the time tonight, and I look forward to speaking with you all in the weeks ahead, and hopefully show you some more light on how this industry is regulated, so that we can make everybody feel better about moving forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Suazo. Next up is Ben Manat.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ben Manat. I'm currently living out here in New Mexico at 720 Turnway Lane, just up the road from these. I'm with Thrust Energy. As Miguel said, we are a family-owned business. I'm here with my brother. And in the interest, just to keep things short, I'm just going to go ahead and come around and say it. This community stands to gain a lot of benefits from what we are bringing here. It's a matter of question. Economic diversity, well, the dogma is with windmills, hydroelectric pumps, solar panels, all these things, all these materials that all this stuff is made for comes from oil and gas. We ourselves are carbon-based lifeforms. Eventually, when we all die, God forbid, we're all billions of years down the road, we're going to be oil and gas. So on that note, I'm just going to say that we've missed us a time. We never know what benefits are to you, let's come on in. We'll show you what we got. And on that note, I'll leave you on for the next day.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manat. Next is Robert Manat.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Robert Manat. I live in Roswell, New Mexico. I'm also an independent patrolling landman. I mainly focus on Permian Basin, like Levington area, Carlsbad, Artesia. In the southeastern Mexico, we live on oil and gas. It creates thousands and thousands of jobs. I know a lot of those companies actually take care of those employees extremely well with health, vision, and everything. A lot of the big ones actually offer educational benefits. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manat. Up next is Amy Barabie.
I think you're going to pass.
Okay. Up next is Ryan Flynn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ryan Flynn. I'm the executive director of the New Mexico Oil and Gas Association. Prior to that, I served as a secretary of environment for the state of New Mexico for over four years. I was also the general counsel for the New Mexico Environment Department. I'm very familiar with the situation that you find yourselves in today, and it is very difficult. As a secretary of environment, I personally felt some of the vitriol that you will no doubtly be exposed to and continue to be exposed. My home was vandalized on two separate occasions. My car was vandalized on numerous occasions. I've had things thrown at me in public meetings. So talking about facts on these issues is extremely difficult. I would note the time is important here, because regulatory uncertainty creates business uncertainty and harms economic development. It took 116 days for the United States to draft the Constitution. We've been working on an ordinance... We've been working on an ordinance for over 18 months. It's time to move forward. When we talk about economic development, the idea of harming the most important industry in the state, an industry that gave $1.7 billion in direct tax benefits to New Mexico last year, 47 million of which came to Sanibel County Public Schools, an industry that gives the tax benefits that help industries like the solar industry and the wind industry, how are you going to help or diversify our economy by destroying the foundation on which New Mexico's economy is built? You're not. There's a lot of good points that have been made regarding environmental impacts, and I absolutely agree, we have to take very seriously water quality, air quality, waste, surface disruption. That's why the New Mexico Environment Department regulates air quality. Groundwater, drinking water are also regulated by the New Mexico Environment Department. The Oil Conservation Division also regulates groundwater. The United States Environmental Protection Agency regulates surface water. The Surface Overtake Protection Act deals with terrain management and surface disturbances. Waste is governed by the Oil Conservation Division and the Solid Waste Department. If your goal is to duplicate regulations that are already in place, then I would encourage you to look at Santa Fe and San Miguel counties ordinances. If your goal is to address those issues that are appropriately before a county, then I would encourage you to look at those local issues, such as setback requirements, noise requirements, lighting controls. Those are the issues that are appropriately before the county. You know, I hear a lot of people talking about how they're not against oil and gas, and I appreciate that. You drove here tonight, and the vehicle's powered by our industry. You put makeup on that is made with our products. You're sitting in chairs right now that are made with our products. But saying that you're not opposed to our industry and then taking actions that directly harm our industry don't seem to match. I would just end by asking you to consider a permify rule, a rule that puts in place clear requirements and also allows an opportunity for a variance proceeding to allow those who want to deviate from those requirements to have to show a burden to you for why they're justified in doing so. And I would just lastly point out that every application for air, water, and waste has public hearing and public participation requirements and public notice requirements. And frequently, those public participation requirements are exploited by those trying to harm our industry. And I know very well how that worked with Intel here and their air quality permits, which were frequently the subject of onerous litigation that had no basis in fact or reality. Thank you very much for giving the opportunity to speak tonight, and we look forward to continuing to work with the county.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flynn. So we've heard public comment in regards to Agenda Item Number Eight, and it's now time for this board to make a decision. I would just offer to my fellow commissioners this, that in the last 18 months, planning and zoning has been charged with delivering to this commission an ordinance that we could vote on. For the first time in those 18 months, a document has come out of P&amp;Z through the efforts of everyone on the P&amp;Z commission. And this commission tonight can be transparent by publishing that document for the public to look at, regardless of how long it's been in existence. If we want to truly be transparent, then I think we want to publish this document for the public to look at. This does not usurp the P&amp;Z's upcoming meeting where they can tweak the document further, but it does move the process forward. So I would just say that if you want to move the process forward, you would vote to publish this document. If you don't want the process of developing an ordinance here in Sanibel County as it relates to oil and gas, then I don't think you would support publishing the document. But I would just recommend that you consider doing it, and the reason why is we've been wanting to develop an oil and gas ordinance here in Sanibel County. And for the first time, P&amp;Z's brought a document forward that represents pretty much what it is I think this board is looking for in terms of an ordinance. Yes, it might need to be tweaked a word or two, or maybe more, but I think we've relied on P&amp;Z to deliver something. They finally have, and now it's time for us to act. We're not voting this in as an ordinance. We're not making any decision about it being an ordinance. All we're doing is doing what we said we would do, and that is be transparent and provide it to the public for their perusal and input. So by publishing it, the county is required to do that weekly for the next two weeks, and that would go on regardless of whatever P&amp;Z's doing. P&amp;Z, though, will have their workshop on the 5th where they can weigh in on the tweaking that was done today. Just remember, the tweaking that was done today was at the direction of the P&amp;Z commission to Director Springfield and Commissioner Stoddard. So I don't see anything wrong with what's been done. So if you really and truly want to be transparent, you would vote to publish this document. It doesn't mean that it's going to be enacted as an ordinance. It just means that we're moving the process forward, and if it ends up being tweaked or modified by P&amp;Z on their workshop, which I think is probably going to be on the 5th or the 6th, this board will have an opportunity to review that document again on September the 7th at our regular meeting. So I'll make a motion to publish a post, the proposed oil and gas ordinance as brought forth by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that as long as we have a few moments of conversation after the second.
All right. You seconded it?
Well, yes.
All right, then you have the floor, sir.
I think just so the public can see what actually this board is tweaking in that document, there's a lot of good additional input put into that document. I think it's important that the public see it, and that it move forward as a topic of discussion. I don't know that it's necessarily anywhere close to the finished product, because there may be some additional things, as we pointed out tonight, that need to be taken care of. But I think the public has to see the document so that they can know what they're providing feedback to. So on that basis, I second your motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Blunt.
Thank you, sir. Fellow commissioners. I heard a text from my P&amp;Z commissioner who's been kind of watching this in and out, and I asked him if he directed P&amp;Z Commissioner Stoddard to meet with Springfield and any other commissioners sitting here tonight. And he sent me back a text and says, "No document produced, just identify some areas that needed work," and that we would have a working meeting on the 5th of September to finish. We would vote and pass to county commissioners on 15 September. I didn't direct anything. We agreed that Dan should meet with Michael to refine based on Tuesday meeting. Nothing about them presenting to county commissioners. This is a complete misrepresentation of what was discussed at our meeting on Tuesday. Again, I go back to my earlier comments. I don't understand why we're even doing this tonight, because all we're doing is publishing this for the P&amp;Z commission, is to look at it on 5 September anyway. So why are we even talking about this tonight? This is the P&amp;Z commission's job. You know, I'm sitting here, I'm listening to people tweak the document here at a county commission meeting. That's not our role. Our role is to get a document from the P&amp;Z commission. I hope to get that document very soon so we can vote on it and get this ordinance on the books. I'm not going to support this tonight based on the time that it was given to me, based on the time it was not given to the public. I support this ordinance, most of what's in here. I'll support it at the appropriate time, after the public, the state, and the oil and gas industry have time to look at it and debate it, so it can come to us for a vote. Doing this, passing this tonight sends a message to the P&amp;Z, that we don't care about their work, we're going to do it, we're going to find another way to get it done. I will not support that. It's not transparency, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. It's not how we conduct ourselves as elected officials. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Blunt, Commissioner Eichel.
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, I would venture to say that in posting this document at this point in time, we're just going to kick the can down the road a little bit, because we're going to have to repost it again after the 5th of September. And so my thoughts are to let the P&amp;Z commission review the document that was presented to us, in addition to everything that was added, and have them look at it, and if they want to tweak it, and after they look at it, post it there, and then let's take action at a later date. But in its form and manner now, I can't very well support that either. I think my P&amp;Z commissioner discussed with me, saying that they were going to have a working session, and they could hammer it out on the 5th of September and finish it. But they didn't indicate to me that they were going to finish it with somebody else. So my feeling is that I can't support moving on this. I think if we move it down to the 5th of September and let them look at it, at that point in time, I think I can move a little bit closer to supporting it.
Mr. Chairman, my clarification.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hahn.
My objective here in posting it is so that the public can see it. So my fellow commissioners saying, you don't want the public to see it before the P&amp;Z looks at it. You know, I think it's important the public sees the document. Right now, it's, you know, they're far short of, I mean, what was published on the agenda is not what people are looking at, or even came here to talk about today. Mr. Director, do you have a comment on that?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, hearing what's going on now, as I explained before, it'll be posted on the web tomorrow when we put the agenda out for the work session.
It sounds like you're going to vote on it. It's going to be a whole thing.
Well, the idea behind having it on the agenda tonight was to work concurrently with P&amp;Z. P&amp;Z finally produced an ordinance document. They had a three-and-a-half-hour meeting solely on that document last night, including public comment. I mean, they brought the thing forth. If I hear what my other commissioners are saying, they're saying, let's let P&amp;Z produce something, I think that's what they're talking. Now, we're not usurping the process here by any means by posting and publishing, but I think Director Springfield makes a good point. It's going up on the website tomorrow anyway, because there's going to be a public meeting in the form of a workshop. So I guess it doesn't really matter. However, it's the spirit of the thing in my mind. When you want to talk about transparency, be transparent, you know, let's put it out there. The fact that it got worked on today by a hard-working P&amp;Z commissioner who took his cohort's words as valid reason for him to move forward and come in and meet with staff today and put the things in the document that his fellow commissioners asked him to get in there, I can't find fault with that. So we have a motion, we have a second, we've already had public comments, or thank you. We've had a motion, we've had a second, let's go ahead and take our vote. Madam Court.
Vice Chair Hahn.
Yes.
Commissioner Blunt.
No.
Commissioner Eichel.
No.
Chair Chetlin.
Chair Boches. So motion does not pass. Let's move on to the agenda.
But it's going to get posted in the...
It's going to be posted tomorrow anyway.